Return to open session and approve certificate of closed meeting seventeen eighteen eleven.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mrs. Boyd, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. We have a motion.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mrs. Boyd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Next, we have our approval of the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on March fifth, two thousand and eighteen, which was a regular school board meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Holmes.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Boyd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. We're all voting on our, are the votes working?
I didn't do it, but I just saw it. Sorry, I was looking.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Alright, and finally, we come to our favorite part of the meeting, which is recognitions. Tonight, we'll start with the word of the month from Walker Grant, Risk Takers.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce to you three amazing scholars from Walker Grant who are going to present a very different presentation that you're probably used to for the word of the month. Tonight, we have Jack McCarthy, Kyle Snyder, and Ryland Holland. They are in Ms. Gettard's Innovations and Inventions class, and we really hope you enjoy, and I'm just grateful that I was able to get the protocols here in one piece. So, gentlemen?
Hello, I'm Jack McCarthy, and today, we're going to present our Shark Tank projects. So, in Ms. Gettard's Innovations and Inventions class, we had to develop an invention, design a business logo, create a mission statement, design a prototype, and present to the Shark judges while, like, for risk-taking. So that's, sorry, that's our project, and today, we're going to present the models we did, so.
The IB word of the month is risk-taking, a trait that we use throughout this project. We were risk-takers because we had to spend our own money and resources for the prototype and facilities when people may not even want to buy our product. We also had to take into consideration that the Sharks may not have wanted to give us money for our product, which was also a risk.
Okay, so, this was our prototype. This is the Downpour Deluge, and it's basically like a human car wash, and it's a shower that it could be in public, or you could have like your own private version, and it's, and this is our prototype. It's, it's just a luxurious shower for all ages, and then it makes sure the water is like, has soap in it, and it comes out really clean, and it like pressurizes, I guess, your skin, and it has chairs, a television, a five-star sound and music system, dimming lights, different levels of water intensity, the choice of where and how many water outlets customer wants, and a more complex choice of temperature of the water that like spits out of the outlets than any other shower. And that was our prototype, and then Jack also had, oh, and that was our logo for perfect cleaning, and we made that on Photoshop. And we also had to do a mission statement and I think a slogan to just say like our goals of the project, and this is Dentastine, which is Jack's project. Okay, so, I created the Dentastine, which is a teeth cleaning product for dentists, and it uses laser technology to clean the teeth. Right, the model that Kyle was showing you, it has, you put your jaw on it, and it fits into your jaw, and you turn it on, and lasers will automatically clean your teeth, and you can use like different flavors, like mint and bubble gum and stuff. So, that's the Dentastine. So this is our logo, Like Industries. Next. And that was it. And then, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have the V S B A Honor Roll.
Local businesses have the power to shape the community attitudes about public schools, and the V S B A Business Honor Roll is a way for local school divisions to recognize local businesses for their support, especially as schools face increasing budget uncertainty. The Business Honor Roll allows us the opportunity to say thank you to Busy Nuts for their vital contributions to our schools. Busy Nuts Incorporated has been a member of the community since nineteen ninety-five, and they support area schools as well as local government and businesses in a wide range of ways, from consulting to security. They are also sponsors of J M Athletics as well as Fredericksburg Parks and Recreation Youth Basketball. Please join me in congratulating Busy Nuts Incorporated for being added to the V S B A Business Honor Roll.
Good evening, everyone. That's a tough act to follow. If you're interested, I am their business manager. If you want to buy any of those products from earlier, they did a great job, and the best part, they had a lot of fun, so I wanted to add that also. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing our pages. We had three eighth-grade students, eighth-grade scholars, I'm still getting used to that, who were selected to be pages this year in the Virginia General Assembly, and I had the opportunity to go visit them, and there were great raves about them and things that they were doing down there. So it is my pleasure tonight to make sure that we bring to the front to recognize Celia Constantine, the daughter of Dr. Costas Constantine, and Mrs. Sophia Constantine. And there's a few events going on, so I don't see Celia, but let's give her a round of applause. Our next student was Joseph Hardy, and I didn't see Joseph here tonight. He is the son of Mr. Todd Hardy and Ms. Amy Hardy, so let's give Joseph a round of applause. And our next page, I do believe this young lady is here with us, and that's Catherine Fiddler, daughter of Mr. Robert Fiddler and Ms. Tristan Fiddler, coming up, sweetie. Congratulations to these students. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Melton and families. Faculty members are asked to nominate a member of the senior class for recognition as the Optimist Club Scholar of the Month. The purpose of the award is to recognize scholars for their efforts in arts, athletics, academics, and community service work. For the month of April, I am pleased to recognize Ms. Jade Copeland, daughter of Mr. Charles Bunbury Jr. and Ms. Arletha Copeland Bunbury. I don't believe she's here, but let's recognize her anyway. Thank you.
That's it for our recognitions this evening. Now, we move on to the hearing of citizens. I believe we have a citizen to be heard to come to the podium and state your name.
My name is John Whack. I am the Assistant Girls Varsity Lacrosse Coach at James Monroe. I come here tonight to thank you for your support of girls lacrosse in the school system, and to ask you to continue that support, and if at all possible, increase it. We started lacrosse in the Fredericksburg City Schools in two thousand and fourteen, thanks to the leadership of Dr. Wyatt at Walker Grant. We're in our fifth year here in the city. Moved over to James Monroe in two thousand and fourteen, so we're at our fourth year at James Monroe. We did two years of club, and we're now in our second year of being a varsity program. I coached over at Walker Grant for a year, and then moved over as the volunteer coach at James Monroe for the first two years of club lacrosse, and had been the assistant to Coach Linda Delaney, who we're very fortunate to have in the program, an All-American out of Lynchburg. We made regionals over at J M in our first year as a varsity program. We're hoping to make it to states this year. We have twenty-four girls on our roster at James Monroe. Eighteen is a good number for a lacrosse team. There's twelve on the field. That would be six on the bench. It allows you to get a good backups, good substitutions in. There are twenty-eight girls playing down at Walker Grant, so that's a total of, what's that, fifty-two? Just short of enough for three teams. We have only one senior on the varsity at James Monroe, so we'll only be graduating one girl out of the program. We would expect to have another ten girls coming in sixth grade, so I think there'll be sixty to sixty-four lacrosse players in the city schools next year. I think it's time for a junior varsity program. Every team that James Monroe plays has a JV team. They expect that we would be bringing a JV team for them to play. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do that as of yet. We're going to have trouble continuing to schedule out-of-conference games if we can't provide those schools some competition at the JV level. So, want to thank you again for your past support, and hopefully, you can find it in the budget to create a JV program over at James Monroe. Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll take a brief pause before we move on with our meeting for those of you who have pressing matters this evening. Yeah, not you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, moving along, we have a superintendent's consent agenda to consider. We have, on that, we have the out-of-district, well, first, we have Head Start approvals, then we have the out-of-district rates, the local plan for career and technical Perkins grant funds, and finally, a trip request from James Monroe. So, may I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion?
I just, you know, in bringing up the Perkins grant, you know, it's nice to read every year, but I think it's a good time for us to revisit, you know, what we are offering for CTE programs, what the state kind of recommends, like what they'd like us to see, and see how we can get there, if we could get some kind of a report on where we are with CTE.
In the future, not.
In the future, not like right here in this moment, but.
That's not, that's not a problem. We can get that.
One of our instructional presentations about what we're currently offering, what we wish we could offer, things that we used to offer but are no longer offering, kind of, and you could maybe follow the outline of the Perkins grant.
Right. It just brings it all up. It's good to revisit.
The other thing of note is we are, there's an increase for tuition. And the trip request.
It's for Ecuador.
It's for Ecuador, but it's not until.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty. Dr. Rochelle, is there a trip in two thousand and nineteen?
No.
Okay.
They just got back from Canada this year.
Right.
And so, the two thousand and twenty, we'd like to get this one approved now so that the students and families can start making, saving money and making payments.
I remember Canada, but I couldn't remember if there was one for next spring, so nothing for next spring. Okay. Alright, may I, y'all ready for a roll call vote? Alright, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Just.
Just a vote.
Oh, sorry, regular vote. All those in favor, oh, we did that?
I already voted.
You voted, okay. Alright, so we move along to personnel items.
Recommend that the board approve the personnel schedules, including the addendum information shown as of April ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bailey? Ms. Boyd?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. And that motion carries for personnel. Next, we have the school calendar for two thousand and eighteen nineteen.
Recommend the school board approve the school calendar for two thousand and eighteen nineteen.
We have a motion. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kay, seconded by Mrs. Boyd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, but I have a question. I know we saw a draft of this before, but I just wanted to sort of point out, on the Christmas calendar, we're not going to start back to school till January third, which is a Thursday. So then, we're just going to go Thursday and Friday of that week, and we also don't have Good Friday off, the Friday before Easter in this calendar year, which are two changes from the past, and your committee, they're okay with that.
One of the reasons we don't have Good Friday is because it doesn't fall at the end of the grading period, which was used for a workday in the past. Students didn't attend school, but employees were here. As the Christmas falls in the middle of the week, it was very difficult for us to give.
To get the ten days, right.
Yeah, to give a two-week break that the employees requested would have us not starting to school back until the eighth of January. With central office shutdown, it would make it very difficult to meet payroll by the fourteenth because of all that we have to do, especially with the new software system that we're coming online. So, we wanted to bring people back a little bit earlier, a couple of days earlier, so we could get those things done.
I know, it's always a challenge. I just get nervous because I know springtime is hard. It's a long stretch.
It is.
Having days there is always good.
And I think it'll be hard for teachers to come back Thursday, Friday.
Oh, yeah. That doesn't make sense.
Well, I think we've looked at all the options. I just wanted to point out those changes. Alright, next, we have the Special Education Plan.
We recommend the school board approve the two thousand and eighteen nineteen Annual Special Education Plan for federal funds.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Boyd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, we had it before I asked my question.
We did. I wish you had asked a question first.
Yeah. Alright, so that motion carries on the special education, and then we have the first reading of policy revisions.
This is that time of year that we'll be seeing some policy revisions as members of the Virginia School Board Association Policy Services. These policy changes come to us based on legislation, recent legislation. Therefore, I recommend that the school board approve the attached policy revisions as recommended by the V S B A Policy Services on first reading.
Motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion?
There aren't really many new policies. All of them are just changing language.
Most of the time, it's wording changes or legal references or those kinds of things. There aren't any really significant ones here.
But, that being said, please feel free to read them all. They're riveting. No, actually, I would recommend that you read them if you're having insomnia issues, but they are worth reading.
Alright, so let's call for a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. On a different note, speaking of legislative issues, it would be nice, Mrs. Holmes has very generously attended many of the legislative events at the state and federal level, so maybe you could give us an update of one of the future meetings. Just a brief, you know, here were the big things that passed in the Virginia Legislature this year, and here's some of the big things that we're continuing to work on, like a bullet.
I'm happy to do that.
No, I'd rather have her give me the bullet points. Thank you very much.
Well, and at the conference, it's not all done yet, you know, but the Virginia School Board Association and the National School Board Association, they do a really nice wrap-up if anybody doesn't want to wait until the next meeting. They do a nice summary of what the legislation that passed is, how it will impact us, and those kinds of things, but I'm happy to do that.
Is this helpful? Because you get sort of lost in the weeds during the session because you might be following a bill, and then, you don't know if the governor vetoed or where it ended up. Alright, additional action items, we have none, so we'll move on to an informational presentation by Dr. Thomas on the profile of a Fredericksburg City student graduate.
Alright, board members, colleagues, Dr. Melton, guests, good evening. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to provide you with an overview of this concept, profile of a graduate, kind of share with you some of the background in terms of how this initiative came to be, what it entails, and just implications for us in terms of our work. So, going back some years, the Virginia Board of Education, the Department of Education collaborated with colleges and universities, business and industry, even the military, on the characteristics and attributes they would like, they wanted to see out of high school graduates. And so, as a result of those conversations, the feedback that these entities provided was that they felt like high school graduates should be able to reason critically, to think creatively, to be able to collaborate with colleagues and teams on projects of various size, that they should be able to communicate in oral and written form during presentations, to be able to correspond effectively in terms of business writings, and to be a conscientious citizen. Now, many of you probably are aware of these outcomes as the five Cs that they are commonly referred to. So, after getting a sense of these outcomes, the Board of Education undertook the process of analyzing and reorganizing the academic experiences of students into this designation, Profile of a Graduate. This was promulgated in two thousand and sixteen by the General Assembly and signed into law by Governor Terry McAuliffe. And essentially, this legislation required schools to reexamine their learning opportunities and to align them with this concept of a profile of a graduate. And so, if you think about this in terms of four domains, and these being the domains, content knowledge is very much the SOWells, having a sense of workplace skills, being an altruistic person in terms of one's community, and being able to think about one's skills, aptitudes, experiences, and channel those into a viable career. And so, the state is now moving away from the whole idea of career and college-ready to this whole notion of life-ready. And so, I think that's reflected in those domains. So if you take it one step further with these domains, as you can see, with each of them there, you see essentially what I would like to describe as standards. So each of these domains have a series of standards that the Board of Education and the Virginia Department of Education feel that students or scholars should experience by the time they ultimately graduate. And so, I've essentially provided you with just an example of one of the standards under each of the domains in terms of what students should experience throughout their K-12 career. So, what does this mean for us? So, in terms of getting our hands around this whole concept, essentially, we started with an audit of these standards and where they occur K-12. Mrs. Brady actually started this process in terms of communicating with the principals, sharing the standards within each domain, and getting a sense of where these experiences were occurring, almost like a progression chart. And so, our work at this point entails determining where are those gaps in terms of experiences that we are not intentionally providing for our kids, and to ensure that all of the standards within each domain are provided throughout our students' experience, our scholars' experience through their K-12 education. So some of the implications that kind of flow from this initiative is that they wanted us to get away from this idea of testing too much. So, as if you recall, many of the SOL tests that were eliminated, the state offered as best practice, not only alternative assessments, but performance assessments. So, as a matter of fact, tomorrow, Mrs. Brady is having a meeting about this idea of where we're going to offer some of these additional performance assessments to expand career exposure, the exploration of careers and planning, to offer more internships, and oftentimes, we think about internships and work-based learning experiences for kids who graduate from high school and perhaps are not interested in pursuing post-secondary study. So, with this initiative, to ensure that all kids, regardless of their ultimate goals, to ensure that they have internship and work-based learning experiences, so they have a better sense of what they will ultimately like to pursue if they do undertake a four-year college experience. And then also, to inform our students of the new diploma changes. So, the scholars that are in question here are rising ninth-grade students. As they transition to the high school, we must ensure that not only that these experiences be reflected in the content and classroom activities that our scholars experience, that we have to also make certain that these experiences are available to our kids at our lower schools as well. So with that, Profile of a Graduate, questions?
Yes. So, it would seem to me that this has come at a good time for our school division in that it seems like a lot of these skills are also covered under IB, so that it meshes very nicely for us.
Yeah, if you think about the civic domain, for example, I know Mrs. Walsh with the IB personal projects and community projects as an example, that aligns directly with that particular domain. So, yes, you're correct. I agree.
The CTE stuff.
I mean, if you read that Perkins grant, there's a lot of things that we should be doing, you know, preparing kids along the way about careers and all of that. From, I mean, I know this is written just for the Perkins grant, primarily for James Monroe, but there are questions that are about the other areas as well, and I mean, middle schools at two times.
One of the things we're exploring also is just coding competency. So we've started on a very small scale to introduce coding formally through the code.org curriculum for our first graders at Hugh Mercer. And so, we want to offer, you know, I personally believe that all students upon graduation should have some exposure to coding, because if you look at all of the industries across the nation, software development is key, and coding is. and coding is essentially the background of that. So that's something we're also trying to explore.
Also, just in the students that were just here from Walker Grant, clearly, they were thinking critically, and they were creative, they were collaborating, they communicated well. The citizen part, you know, I'm not sure about.
Well, think about school citizens also. But I think the project piece, I think is a good way in terms of, you know, what our scholars can do to affect their immediate school community and the greater community is certainly in line with this initiative.
Well, and certainly the internships. Now, these are things that the Department of Ed...
Well, these are things that they're saying that we have to be more intentional about.
Right. And is there money that's attached?
Of course.
I was mostly, it was mostly a rhetorical question. Right. Well, you know, because if we, I would love for us to expand our internships. I think that that would be one of the best ways for all of our students, whether they're college-bound or career, however they're bound, that they really hone the skills about communication and collaboration and creative thinking. At internships, it's hard to replicate that in a classroom.
Right.
So I would love to see us expand those. That would require somebody to arrange those.
Yeah, and I think if we're going to do this and be authentic and do it with fidelity, that we have to not only offer, but document and measure our effectiveness in terms of offering those experiences to our kids. Yes, yes, sir.
This is probably the third presentation I've heard on this, and I was under the impression that with this rising ninth-grade class, that they were going to be required to have some internship. Does that not require?
Oh, that's, yeah. What I showed you in those, those are requirements. Like, I didn't...
About being intentional and encouraging it versus it being required.
No, it's required. It is certainly required. Now...
The last update that I heard at the February 28 meeting was language that was far less intentional than what it had previously been. We did a feedback from the smaller divisions across the state, because you can't provide internships to some of the smaller communities. So what I heard was language that referenced exposure and opportunity, not just narrow the definition.
So we haven't quite figured out exactly.
The state is still giving us that.
Yeah. I think you're going to see this transition as we go. I think you're going to see a lot of, we've been talking about this for five or six years, which is why we looked five or six years ago toward going to IB, because we knew it would meet some of the requirements. But I think you're still going to see changes. There, this year in the legislative session, there were a couple of bills introduced that would have effectively dismantled this process. And those still may be introduced next year. There were bills introduced to add testing rather than take testing away. So it's going to be interesting, you know, as there's windows of opportunity open as elections occur, and, you know, we had a lot of new people in Richmond this year. So who knows what's going to happen. And we also changed our state superintendent. Actually, we don't have a permanent state superintendent right now. Dr. Staples retired. Dr. Constantino is the acting state superintendent, and the governor's not named a replacement yet. So we don't know where the Department of Education's even going to go. But this is the way we think it's going to happen, but it could change in a month. So any answer that we give you today might be wrong in May.
Yeah, this is how things exist at this time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an update on the school board and city council subcommittee meetings. That is something...
Budget.
Oh, budget. Sorry, I skipped a page. Mr. Baker, you have a final answer?
I think I can be fairly brief tonight. The report you have in front of you is through February 28, and there are both positive variances in both revenues and expenditures. I will say that the second reading and adoption of the resolution to return the fund balance to us and designate those funds has been passed by the city. So in the next budget or finance report, I hope the budget has been uploaded to reflect those additional funds in the current year. So you'll see some of the variances change because of that reappropriation of the prior year fund balance. Are there any specific questions about this report that I can field from the board tonight? No?
Oh, the fund balance is huge.
Right.
One question, with our extended or prolonged winter, do we see much of a trouble with...
Our energy bills?
We haven't yet. One of the things that happens is that the envelope is still being monitored and maintained by our energy conservation program, the, you know, the one we implemented a few years back. So when we see a variance, it's not that large. We do have a bigger envelope to heat at the newer schools. They're big and beautiful, and they do have a bigger volume to worry about. But as long as we have those controls in place, you know, and operating effectively, then we don't see a huge fluctuation. Having said that, some of those bills haven't come through yet. They'll show up in the next round. So this winter has dragged out significantly longer. Yeah. So hopefully, not too much. We do build in a little bit of cushion for that, not as much as we would like. And you can see throughout the budget, I don't know if it's been explained, but typically, a school budget is about 85% of salaries and benefits, and ours is creeping up towards 87, 88%, because we really do restrict a lot of the supplies and expenditures for equipment and that kind of thing. But we do the best we can. So we still do have some cushion for an unusual winter. This one's just unusually long. Thank you.
Now, the update on the school board and city council subcommittee meetings. As you all know, Mrs. Ream and I have been meeting once a month with two members of city council, city staff, and school administration staff. And it has been very helpful, I think, certainly for staff to get that face time with their counterparts in the city government. We've had some changes in who comes from city council. It's usually Matt Kelly, and this time Brad Ellis was able to attend. So he attended, but the mayor attended the previous session. So I think that they're a good opportunity to have candid discussions and transparency. We've, of course, been talking along, talking all along about budget, you know, budget, upcoming budget, as well as our need for new classroom space. At this recent meeting in March, we, in particular, we discussed school security, and the council members and the city manager were very supportive. We went through a lot of the things that we spoke about at our recent board meetings that were implementing our work with the Frederickburg City Police and how supportive they've been. So that was very good. Did they, were there any specific additional things that they offered?
Yeah, there were. Actually, I think the meetings are going to turn out to be very beneficial. As we were talking about the security items that we were adding, the one, the cameras at Hugh Mercer came up, and we were concerned because we didn't have, we couldn't find the $40,000 for the cameras. And because of Mr. Whitley being there with the city and having the agreement of both Mr. Ellis and Mr. Kelly, the city is going to find money in the fund balance to fund those. So rather than have to wait until July, we're going to be proceeding with that pretty quickly. Is that correct, Mr. Russ?
Yes, in the process now.
In the process now. So they helped us expedite that, which was extremely helpful.
So those are the types of things that can come out of these meetings. We were a little disappointed in some of our discussions about looking forward to building a new school, a new elementary school. Those present, now, this certainly doesn't represent all city council members, those present talked about extending that timeframe farther out. We had looked at a 2020 date and had anticipated using the proffered land at Idlewild or from the Idlewild Development. They would, they expressed some ideas about pushing something like that farther out and building additions to current schools, or using trailers to accommodate our students until such time as they would prefer to see funding for schools. There was also some question about the land at Idlewild, whether that would indeed have to be used for a school, or if it could be used for another purpose, like if the city sell it or use it for commercial development. So in light of those discussions, we agreed that the school, our school administration would look for a company to conduct a feasibility study to really give us the hard numbers about looking at our growth, where we need the additional space, when we would need the additional space. And the city is also going to provide them with any acreage within the city limits that could possibly be used in addition to the Idlewild track be used to build a school. So the city will supply that to the company that is selected. The superintendent will form a committee of administrators that will interview companies to conduct this feasibility study, and then that will take about 90 days once we extend a contract. And then after that time, we'll have some more information to bring back to the city. And we spoke about going that route, doing the feasibility study, and getting us all some firmer numbers and information.
And the next meeting's Friday.
Yeah, the next meeting is this Friday. So please feel free to share with any of us, or Mrs. Ream will be back by then, but with the administration or me, your thoughts. We meet with city council also tomorrow night for a work session on our budget. So you're welcome to share ideas with any of us going forward.
What I would like to manage to state is that at the time, the school board made a deal with city council to allow them to use the property at Hugh Mercer for a police station. We were promised the land at Idlewild. And I just want to make sure that city council, and I'm not sure if the members there were the members in place when the deal was struck. Some of the school board members were not in favor of giving the land to the police department, but we recognized that the city needed it at the time, and we were assured by city council that they would, in fact, honor that agreement. So we may need to remind the current members of city council on what the agreement was when we gave up the property at Hugh Mercer.
That's on Calum Boulevard, and we had anticipated possibly using that for a future school site.
Right.
You both were on the school board?
Yes.
Are there any members on council now that were on council then?
I don't think so.
I mean, some have. Matt Kelly's been around a long time.
Maybe Matt Kelly.
Was he on and off and back?
I know.
I don't think he was.
Since I've been here, this deal was struck before I got here.
Yeah, it was before. Yeah, yeah.
Matt Kelly, maybe.
Maybe.
Carrie Devine.
Maybe Carrie. Carrie may have been on the school board at the time.
She was on the school board.
Yeah, yeah.
What about in the city manager's staff?
No.
Everybody's gone?
The last one would have been Beth Cameron.
But nobody like in that staff that's...
I don't think there's anybody that would have been involved in conversations dealing with that.
And they did not imply in any way that this was something that council had decided. It was just brought up as, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? Have you thought about, you know, expanding this school or expanding that school, or, you know, as ideas? So I don't know that other members, like bringing up Carrie's name, I don't know if Carrie even has heard that idea, that the Idlewild track wouldn't be used.
Going back on the conversation about, you know, the initial, about maybe expanding some of our current schools, Mosley has done a pretty comprehensive study about their recommendations.
Their recommendations, however, were based on enrollment.
Right.
And just a cursory look at the buildings as to whether they could be expanded or not.
Right.
The study that we're going to commission will go in much more detail, and will include engineers looking at each site and helping with the feasibility study. So it will be a much more comprehensive study.
Okay. But one of the issues with, like, expanding some of our older buildings was that the common areas can't support more students.
The core areas, such as the library, cafeteria, are not expandable.
All right, moving along, we have the VSBA Hot Topic Conference, April 17 in Chesterfield. I think, and is Mrs. Ream going to that? I feel like she usually goes to that.
It's on equity in the schools, a lot of it in challenging environments. I think it's going to be a really good conference if anybody, all of a sudden, has a break in their schedule. I think it's going to be well worthwhile.
And then on, so please let Mrs. Wright know as soon as possible if you can attend that. And then we have the VSBA School Law Conference on June 1. Where's...
It's usually Richmond.
Oh, in Richmond. So please let Mrs. Wright know if you can attend that. We've got a reminder of the work session tomorrow at 6 o'clock. Everyone's aware of that. That should be on the second floor in their meeting rooms.
I think...
Third floor. Third. Third floor. Third.
At the Executive Plaza.
Right, Executive Plaza.
Thank you. I would have gone to the wrong building.
Oh, right. We have our school board retreat. Mrs. Wright gave me the date for that.
May 18.
May 18. So we need to determine what time would we like to start that and end that. In the past...
7:30?
No.
He said 7:30.
You know.
He was talking the nonsense.
In the past, we've started at 9:00 and ended around 1:00 or 2:00.
Yeah, right after lunch.
Does that suit y'all?
It's much more reasonable.
Okay. So Mrs. Wright, is that enough information for you to move forward? We'd like breakfast and lunch, please.
May 18?
Yes, Friday, May 18.
At the VSBA offices. All right, anything for the good of the order?
Mrs. Boyd and I met with Delegate Thomas on March 27, and we toured JM and highlighted the career and technical education programs there. He got to be there during change of class. I think he thought that was very civilized and was pleasantly surprised. We also toured this building, and then we went to Walker Grant, where we got to see the class, what's it called, the Innovations?
We had a number of classes.
Well, the one that, where the gentlemen were here for tonight.
At that station, it was the Innovations.
Yeah, the Innovations class. So he got to hear some of their pitches and, you know, how they came about. And so he was, you know, very engaged, very interested in how we do things at the city. We also highlighted our, the food truck and just our overall nutrition programs, and he was very interested in those as well. Mr. Baker was a good participant for that, because he could answer all the financial questions and all the nutrition questions that he had about that. So I think it was a very productive day, and he said he would really like to come back and see Hugh Mercer and Lafayette at some point as well. So we'll arrange that.
Thank you all for doing that. That's good. It's especially good he's a new delegate. Did we have someone else that wanted to visit? Another legislator?
I would like to just remind members of the board about the FCPS March Madness Basketball Tournament.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have our championship game on Wednesday at 6:30.
Hugh Mercer versus James Monroe.
Versus James Monroe for the district title. Come on out to the game.
I'm not sure everybody signs that way.
I hear the coach for Hugh Mercer might be a little... I hear the coach for Hugh Mercer might be a little, huh.
All right, anything else?
Be there or be square. Okay.
May have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries. Have a great evening, everyone, thank you.